You know, don't want any surprises.
I know you did. It's alright.
Perfect man. What's up, man? Hey, you know what? I applaud all of y'all. For y'all hard work, determination. Whatever the case is. Stay strong. And do what's right.
I know, that's right.
Do what's right. Ain't that right? You can hear me too. You got more than everybody?
Yeah, it is. That's what I was thinking. I was like, I have one in my car. I can go grab. Should I go buy some? You should go buy these because it's about the third. They don't have it. Oh. Fantastic. How are you? Good to see you.
How y'all living?
Good, good, good.
You came to get a purple seat.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. That purple. Standing room only. How you doing? Julie's on me.
Good, sure. You guys have a lot of...
It is love.
Hi, I'm Amber Frederick. Nice to meet you, Jane.
I'm a Ward Five voter, so you...
How are you? Good to see you.
May we all be Ward Five voters. The texture of the suit, I think. Could you put it? Attach it to the button? Like on, um, you could do another buttons. There you go. There you go. You just gotta speak loud and tell them who you are. Uh, it's like their community song. It's actually a nice little space though. You don't like? Go up to the four, you're in the upper. It doesn't ruin your... Good. I know. You support the fight. Are you related to the fight or are you just here? Are you related to the fight or are you just here? Okay. Okay. We love that. We love that. That's great. We all gotta do it. I am. That's what I'm hearing about.
On our one side of the...
Well, not just me. You can't hear. I don't know. But you can't hear me. Yeah? Everybody at the table. Yep, yep. Could be you one day. That's okay. What do you want to do? For sure.
If you're not basketball, you could be still.
You can do ball. Yeah, you could be a basketball player and then you could go to... Yep.
How you doing?
You know what? I think you have time. I think we have some time.
Also, none of us knew what we had to figure out. So, don't think any of us are...
You just sign up? Yep, yep.
I don't think I've ever really been in this space.
Really?
I used to have some.
They supposed to be getting some.
Every other Saturday.
I'm gonna say.
To my homeownership development classes for events like Home Ownership every Saturday.
You said you want to do five? Here? Oh, what? Twenty first. I appreciate you. What house you live in?
Twenty-one nineteen. It's, it's right.
Twenty-one nineteen, you're a year old. You're an outside.
Yeah, yeah.
Rex.
Yeah.
Next. How you feeling? How are you? We can't hear. I'm not here with us. When in the zoo, she first on there. I didn't see. I didn't see expect. We kind of have like the same... Yep, yep, yep. I was like... On Thursday? Yeah. There's like eight of them. I'm like, are we... I mean, interesting. Yeah. Yeah, about eight. No, you don't vote yet. You don't vote. So, primary voting. Can I get another chair? Are you gonna be eighteen in November? How can you vote on eighteen? Nineteen, okay. Plus nine. Yep, well, you can start voting when you're, when you're eighteen.
Always.
Yep, yep. Yep. No, wait till after. I think I just water. Yeah. Yep, just water.
Water please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
So, you just got... About my house, four years ago.
Hello.
Okay, I was on eighth and... For that.
Thanks, thank you.
Twenty-six. That was a much better. And eighth and...
So, George, well, the rare...
Yeah, I was working over here, but I was...
Did they call it...
Major.
They did.
I came over.
Yeah, everything in the camp. Camden. Yeah, yeah. And the mascot is Camden.
Thank you so much. Governor's here. I keep a note and I love you. I see you. Oh, you think this is good?
I text you. My next thing. Why you in that? This business is my legacy. Yeah.
Yeah, and then Maria and Richard. And then the property. Yeah, to Rachel property. I got today. It's actually... On your lawn. Yes. They finally quieted that property. I was like, what is this? Next door, then the next grand house. Yeah. Well, it's a legacy. So, her family owned that. They were American. I moved over. Yeah. And it's like, Jesus. Hey, lady.
Hey. How are you?
I'm good. Don't feel bad about it, Sam.
I love you, Liza. She's so sweet. Yeah, she is. She's... She is. How you doing?
I'm... Etrophy.
Nice. Okay. Pearl, nice to meet you.
Marcus, good to see you. I'm Amber. Okay, awesome. Nice to meet you, Marcus. Are you firefighters?
I am.
Yeah. Also going over more night. Yep.
It's weird, huh? And we have four right-hand guys. Well, not just me, but multiple guys. Oh, which ones?
Okay, yeah. I was like, more night.
You're in the greenhouse.
Fabulous. Yeah, please do. Yeah, love you.
Yeah, I want...
Thank you. Nice to see you.
I'm gonna see my dog.
Huh?
I got a blue house. She's brown and white. Yeah, I'll watch her. Oh, I'm like that. My kids, that's very, that's very special. Oh, no, I get out there, I watch my dog walk around. I stopped walking her down by crying because there was somebody there who just had their dogs out, like, in the yard. I was, yeah. And I was like, oh, no. He gets... But her dogs are huge. And they do not be, they just be in the yard. And I was like, uh-uh, no. I, it doesn't benefit me to have control over my baby if somebody else will have control over theirs, you know? Because I'll cry like ready, you know, over my dog. Like, please don't hurt my baby. She spent a lot of money on that. Should I felt that way about my cat? I had a cat. Thing I... Dog next door to it. I was, I was standing. I killed my cat. I was lost. It was like, oh, no, not my cat. The kids was all sad. I'm like, Lord, it's... Like, please. Allow it.
I eat fish. I'm a, I'm a Presbyterian. Are you really?
No, the dog next door, he was like, there's...
Okay. Everybody's like, I said, I think I told you this. People are like, oh, you Presbyterian? I'm like, no. United Methodist, but... Close.
They just wanna be, they just wanna be in the door. I mean, I think you're the one with the most people.
Everybody excited?
Feeling ready. Feeling excited.
Could be salty out there or not.
Absolutely.
Y'all salty. Y'all thought we was gonna do nothing. It's okay, bro.
What'd he say? What did you just say?
You thought we wasn't gonna show... Y'all was... I don't know, man. Not my own farm, man. I don't know. Love you. We need less dog.
We love you too. That's right.
We're not youting that at all.
Forever down.
That's it, love.
Yeah, correctly. Right, right. Thank you. May we, may we all prosper and break no limits. That's right. Oh, Eli. Are you Miles Andrea Young? Yes, nice to meet you too. Julia, I'm Amber. Nice to meet you and...
Excuse me, everyone. Excuse me, everyone. Excuse me, everyone. Thank you. Uh, we'll be starting in five minutes. Six thirty, I'll be back.
Alright.
Uh, welcome, welcome. Please get some food, refreshments, and nice to have everyone here today.
Thank you. I do, and then I smell for chicken and I'm like... Should I give it all up? There's nothing like, you know, there's nothing like it. And kung fu is exactly. Like, kung fu is... I like it real just like...
Victor said, it's a...
Well, maybe it's actually... I like, well, I like this year because of Ortiz. So, it's been like over a decade. So, I don't remember, but Ortiz is... I've never had no Ortiz. Yeah, but sometimes my girlfriend is sneaky like Hollywood. I cheat. I cheat. I do like little things. I'm like, but something like really... Yeah, yeah, true, true, true. I'll just, I'm like, I'm like, only when I'm with you. And it's like, no, I don't make it big. I haven't, you know? I try, I try to be good. Try to be good. She knows, she knows. Yeah, she's like, she looks at me and she's like... Ruben Aguirre. Yeah, and I'm like... That was cute. You know them? That's your daughter? I was gonna say, the tall one? She looks like...
Oh, no, not the tall one.
No, no? The small one? What are you? I think he's gonna move around.
Yeah, I'm gonna... God, it's gonna say your... I feel like I'm being biased. You'll be able to hear me.
Yeah, same. I usually don't need a microphone. But now he knows your... Breaking news. City Council can't get Amber Frederick's chickens. Yeah, that's what they're just saying. I was feeling a, I was feeling a secret. Gotta be careful. This is great. And so where do you live?
I'm in Washington.
Oh, you're in Washington. Okay, great. Nice, nice. So, what do you do? Nice. So, yeah, I'm, I'm... I'm in, I guess, but I was like, okay. So, like, right by, um, yeah. Right over by, like, North Point. I'm like, just down the block from North Point. Literally, yeah, I almost walked, but it's like, I don't wanna be sweaty. I don't wanna like wear myself out. Too much. Out, you know, like out. Yeah. I have outfits. That's... That's a good, like, thirty. Are you tired? Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, at least you have the... To like get...
So, we do a lot of, like...
I was born...
Lot of community service work, yeah. We had our social regional convention. It's here, but I didn't go. It's here. Goodness. I just had two. I had my wine with my sister.
That's funny. Yeah, get to your mom. Okay, so, yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to put her stuff back there.
Oh, no. Oh, no. I'm gonna be like, shit.
Everyone, a small amount of housekeeping. If you have questions, you have, and I do not have them in my hand, please. Thank you, thank you. Um, otherwise, right on time, everyone, first and foremost, welcome. Um, we are greatly appreciative to have you here. My name is Michael Smith. I'm our moderator for the evening. Um, couple things. The Ward Five Candidates Forum is gonna be sponsored by Black Political Action Youth Civic Leaders. Thank you to Mother's Love Initiative and Lisa Clements for, um, letting us have this phenomenal space.
Yeah.
Um, we are excited to have six potential candidates represent Ward Five. I will have to introduce themselves here momentarily. Uh, Ward Five had the lowest turnout of all wards in the cities of the city of Minneapolis. The general election statistics of November fifth, twenty twenty-four, the data reported that fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-one registered voters and ten thousand five hundred and fifty-one total ballots cast. So, with this upcoming election in a four-year term, it's imperative that we put the best leadership in place in our city council. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance. So, I would like the candidates to introduce themselves. We will start with, uh, Ms. Andrea Young.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Young. Um, I'm the executive director of the Heritage Park Neighborhood Association. I work for North Point West, um, I work for North Point as a West Broadway Coordinator. Um, I'm a renter, soon to be on May, I mean, April first, right here in the Hawthorne neighborhood. Um, I graduated from Tennessee State University with a Bachelor of Communication Studies. Um, and then I'll be graduating again with my Master of Public Administration and a Certificate of Leadership. I was born and raised in the fifth ward, um, and that's where my pa- passion comes from, to make a difference here. Um, I'm a member of the Blue Line Coalition where we advocate by remembering that it's not about the train, it's about the people. Um, I advocated for ten million dollars of anti-displacement funds that the Anti-Displacement Prosperity Board is currently working to maneuver into, um, the corridor. Um, starting April first, I will have a seat at the, uh, Blue Line Extension and CMC meetings. Um, I'm a member of Bring Back Six, and in this space, we work to help not repeat the history of displacement and safety on Oso Memorial Highway through advocacy work. Um, we have worked with MINDA to add the white pillars on Oso, give the city bus, um, lanes, or give the city buses their own lanes, bring walking tours to Oso Memorial Highway, reduce speed limits when the city, uh, within the city, increase crosswalk times, uh, hosted events like the Reimagine, and currently working on anti-displacement event as well. Um, I'm a member of the Zero Burn Coalition. And in this space, we work heavily to have the trash burner removed. Most people don't know that their health is being compromised by the incinerator, which was initially placed in the marginalized black and brown communities like ours. I have advocated at City Hall and was a part of the advocacy work to push the county to move, uh, shutting the burner down. I'm also still a part of this work. I am a Minneapolis Public Schools graduate, and I have a special connection with MFT fifty-nine, where I meet with them a lot and, um, do some like advocacy work with the union, um, around Minneapolis Public Schools. I am also a member of the Community Land Trust Conversation where we discuss issues about disparity in our community and work together to find ways to build our community up through work first and career pathway opportunities. Lastly, I am in partnership with the University of Minnesota to bring restorative... Okay, sorry.
Yeah, would you like me to stand up?
Whatever makes you feel comfortable. Um, Amber Frederick.
Hi, everybody. Hi, back there. My name is Amber Frederick, and I am, uh, running to be your city council representative. First, I want to say thank you, everybody, for coming out. This is an insane turnout, an amazing turnout for our community. Wonderful. Thank you so much to Black Political Action for extending the invitation to me. It means so much, uh, as someone who cares passionately and deeply about city politics, first and foremost, I think that is where the best change and advocacy can happen. Um, I, uh, am born and raised in a union household. My mom is the Ask Me Local Chapter President. So, union politics and union policy is what was at the forefront of our dining room conversations. Those progressive values and those decisions are what made it possible for me to live a happy and healthy life. And it's my belief that extending those to my community members in Ward Five, uh, is some of the best advocacy work that can be done. I am... I am an advocate for union values, workers' rights. Um, and Minneapolis is where I found my family, my best friends, and I was able to establish my life here as a young person, as a Gen Z-er. Uh, my work is in the north side as a housing coordinator currently. So, I work every day with young people who are looking to establish safe and secure, stable homes on the north side. So, I see the barriers present to not only renting, but owning a home um, and being an affordable, uh, having affordable places to live in our ward. Minneapolis has given me so much, and I am dedicated to working in city council to give that back to our ward in increasing opportunities for everyone and their families to thrive and have an amazing community to live in. I'm really honored to be here today. I can't wait to meet each and every one of you, um, and be in conversation and to really invite everyone into that democratic process. Thanks so much.
Alright, good evening, everyone. My name is Miles Wilson. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, I'm a lifelong Ward Five resident. You know, born and raised here. My history in this ward stems long before I was here, so it goes back to my grandparents and then my, my mother um, and my aunts and uncle. Um, I base my candidacy on my family values that were instilled in me from honesty, transparency, and accountability. And the key priorities that I face and I want to take care of, uh, within this candidacy is constituent services, so valuing every voice that is being spoken from my ideas, visions, and concerns. Public safety, that's where my background comes from, from an organizational standpoint, of working on things like police reform, and then also, uh, equitable growth solutions. So, it does include, um, metro transit, homeownership, and also small business development. So, again, I want to thank you all for being here, and I'm excited to, uh, have this conversation tonight.
Hello, beautiful people. Make some noise for you. My name is Tanitha Pearl Warren. I am your Ward Five City Council candidate. I'm currently the Homeownership Development Manager for Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity, where I spearhead the Advancing Black Homeownership Program for advancing black homeownership, foundationally black Americans. I'm a homeowner in Ward Five. I'm also a mother of six, a grandmother of six. I've helped over a hundred and fifty-plus people obtain their first home through financial literacy education. I've been a mortgage broker, held my Series Seven Securities License, life, accident, health, property, and casualty insurance license. I also was my own broker for my own financial, uh, wellness company, Higher Trinity Financial Services. Taught with Minneapolis Public Schools for six years as the lead literacy intervention specialist. I'm a poet, author, comedian, lover of the arts, um, pet owner. Happy to be here with y'all and learn more about all of you. Thank you. Etrophy.
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 Yes, that's alright. Everyone calls me Missy. At work, and Mayor Jane Byrne, I started out as a youngin', like my grandkids doing door knocking and out there trying to get the first black mayor elected in the city of Chicago. I come to you guys as, as, as another candidate for the fifth ward. I come with experience in being a former policy aide for fourth ward, um, city council member, Philippe Cunningham. I come with the experience of working with North Side Achievement Zone before it became North Side Achievement Zone, before, when they just got the startup money. Urban Homeworks, Jewish Asher Community Center. I've done a number of things in North Minneapolis. I've established, uh, the Equity Pipeline, Equity in Place. I've worked with a number of different... I knew about the light rail before the light rail even came. I knew about it from Lynda Higgins, then former, uh, Gary Cunningham, my former Met Council Representative, by going to meetings. I knew about the Upper Harbor Terminal that sat at the park board for years before it moved out to the community. So, I'm very informed. I'm very making sure that I keep all of my neighbors and my community members informed. I've always like, hey, we need to go to the park board. We need to go to this meeting because they talking about this. We need to go down here. We need to go to this meeting because they were talking about things that fired you when you dropping our kids off for best, for basketball practice. And they would not invite us to the meetings. So, I come to you this evening as an experienced person who has been at City Hall for the last seven, eight years now. So I come to you this evening as an experienced person who has been at City Hall for the last seven, eight years now, who have established a number of different things. Thank you, Ms. Bridget.
Hello, everyone, nice to meet you all, glad to see you all come out tonight. And thank you to DPA for inviting me out, and I'm a candidate for Ward Five. And my experience is serving the community, inspired, doing youth intervention work, violence prevention work. And also, I moved up here in ninety-six, saw my children are born here, my current children are here, my mother is here. So I have a lot of young people that I work with, that I love and care for that's here. And I just want to see the city, you know, I've seen the city go through a lot of changes, you know, a lot of good and bad. And I just want to do my part in making it better. And they welcome to invite me out. I look forward to hearing from you all.
So. So.
Go ahead. Want to jump in there? So you guys, if you're a candidate.
Can you put something right there for the sun?
If you see me starting to be the pilot, and I start to expand my wings to land the plane, that means your time is ending, we don't have turbulence, we're gonna smoothly land. So that means your time's up.
Thank you. Perfect.
So, everyone, community-wise, we have constructed questions from not only Black Political Action Youth Civic Leaders, but we're also going to be taking the questions that have been provided by the audience as well. So first question, where are some initiatives, aspects, and/or organizations in Ward Five that you have been a part of, or been a proud?
So initiatives, the Blue Line Coalition, the Zero Burn Coalition, the Bring Back Six Coalition. I've been a part of, and again, I kind of elaborated on those. I've, currently, I'm working with the University of Minnesota again to bring some restorative practice work into the community, which, that is kind of like coming with a focus of public safety or trying to address public safety in a holistic killing type of way. I'm sorry, can you, the ending part of the question?
There was.
Okay.
Or organizations in Ward Five that you were proud of?
Yeah, so those will be the, I guess, those will be the organizations that I have so far, like, worked with and been a part of or a part of working with. As far as in the community, I've worked with Phyllis Wheatley, so we're getting ready to do a Earth Day Cleanup, which is on the nineteenth. I've partnered with USI, which is an organization inside of the Heritage Park Neighborhood. I collaborate with Harrison Neighborhood Association for work. I work with Summit O Y C. I work with, I don't know, Alyssa, I've worked with Oddway at the Jordan Community with, again, the Zero Burn and trying to get the trash runners shut down. Yeah, that's what, it's kind of rambling off the top of my head, at least.
Please repeat your name when you talk.
Yes.
Will do.
Andrea Young.
Would you please, yeah?
What are some initiatives, aspects, and/or organizations in Ward Five that you are proud of?
Thank you. I'm Amber Frederick, Amber Frederick. So my current job currently is working with the YMCA. So my job there is to work directly with youth experiencing homelessness, so ages eighteen to twenty-four. So my job is to connect them to safe and secure housing and provide rental subsidies to secure life that is built upon self-sustaining practices. A lot of the young people that I work with have found housing, affordable housing, in the ward. So I'm really proud of the amount of affordable housing that is available, and I think the YMCA's practice within the ward is something to be really proud of as well. My work as a disability justice advocate as well affects Ward Five. I work with people all around the state, but my work is based in Minnesota and expanding that work to the city council, ensuring that Ward Five is a place that everyone, no matter their ability, can enjoy their life here, as well as the various parks that are around, just enjoying the, the community in general. The Upper Harbor Terminal is something that I've been, I've been focused on as a homeowner with the City of Lakes Community Land Trust. That's been something that I've been really excited to speak about. So that's the program that allows homeowners grants to own their home in an affordable sense. There's over four hundred homes in Minneapolis, but I would love for there to be more homes available in North Minneapolis so that more people can establish a family lifestyle here. Thank you for the airplane.
All right, the initiatives and organizations?
Yeah, what are some of your initiative aspects and/or organizations in Ward Five that you're proud of?
Okay, well, I'll list them in order first. I'll start with the Urban League, Team Team Works, a Mother's Love, and the Young People's Task Force, and I'll kind of go through them in that order. So the Urban League, I mean, again, this is the ward that shaped me to be who I am today. With the Urban League, that's where I got my first introduction to public speaking. At the age fourteen, I read a letter from Mayor R.T. Ryback at the time for Dr. Clarence Hightower as he was leaving the Urban League. So that kind of goes back to the history of things. That's what kind of put me in the space of community and organizing, and community organizing. The Team Team Works, that was where I got my first job at actually Bethune Park. And then for the next four, five years, that translated into Harrison Park, where, again, they employed me as a young person in the summer to learn project management, teamwork skills, communication skills. And yeah, so again, that kind of put me in a space of, you know, getting employed, understanding what it was like to work for my dollar. A Mother's Love and the Young People's Task Force. The Young People's Task Force is something that myself and a partner, well, Nicholas Martins was here tonight, another one, A.J. Flowers, who will be here later, where we have worked to shape young people in Minneapolis in general, but specifically focusing on areas like North Minneapolis, of doing things of fishing for freedom events, Day on the Farm, where we took them out to a farm out in Elk River, social events, backpack drives, where we partnered with the Mother's Love to make sure that young people had backpacks and, and equipment going to school year. A toy drive, where we didn't just focus on getting toys to young people, but focusing on the young people that were being missed so the ages fifteen to eighteen, where they're going back to school after holiday break, and we want to make sure that they had things they needed to follow through with. So thank you.
It's me again. Things that I'm proud of and.
What are some initiative aspects and/or organizations in Ward Five that you are proud of?
Well, I have been an EJCC Fellow for three years, working with the Environmental Justice Coalition Council and the Public Policy Project. Just did some work with the City of Minneapolis Cost Share Program and championed with KIMPs, getting them to change over some of their idling gas trucks to electric vehicles through the City of Minneapolis Cost Share Program. Read them back their mission statement and said that it's their mission to ensure that we're healthy in all ways, to reduce our carbon footprint. Also been a part of the City of Minneapolis Youth Coordinating Board, where received four merit awards with the City of Minneapolis and a Peacemaker Award, leading the youth outreach program through the North Minneapolis corridors on a grant from the City of Minneapolis Health Department and the CDC for Youth Violence Prevention and Teen Dating Violence. I've also worked for the Urban League Twin Cities, which is where I received my HUD certification from. Had the privilege of working with a lot of families during the course of the pandemic, where there was a lot of uncertainty, a lot of deplorable living conditions. Were able to help people relocate, get their rent paid, pooled funds from Polad Foundation to help relieve some disparities around renting and homeownership, creating pathways for individuals in that fashion. I'm also a Hennepin County foster parent, so my house is a safe house, okay? I'm a mother, probably picked up some kids and took them on some different field trips and outings, and just talking to my neighbors. So that is a lot of the work that I have done here in North Minneapolis and will continue to do. Thank you.
Again, E. Tropic Byrne, I go by E. Kind of figured I'd ask this question, but I got more to add. The first thing, where we at right now? Right here in Cubs, right? So right here is what I was part of. Cubs in twenty twenty, it was owned by Super Value, then flipped hands to Unify, and they wanted to take out. So right where we at right now means more importantly, because we utilize this every week. And it's very important for our community. So I'm gonna start with this, this North Side Community Center. I'm also gonna say, I worked with Asian Access Media, so many people, Jewish Action Community, of course, Community Land Trust. The building, the Regional Access Celebration Building, twelve fifty-six bin. North Side Achievement Zone, Northern Meadows Environment. So Northern Meadows used to be up here, and, and I worked with them to make, I worked with the community, let me, let me rephrase that. Worked with community as a city employee to make for sure that that was, that that environment that was calling us asthma over here, that that was taken care of. I worked on that, a lot of different things. The most important thing that I, that I love is the neighborhoods, our neighborhood councils, our neighborhoods, because our neighborhood is, is where former Mayor Sheff St. Melton put over four hundred million dollars into. It was NRP money, and when I moved over here, people didn't understand that they keep our houses through that money? And now that NRP has dwindled out to forty mil, to forty million out of four hundred million? So yeah, I would say the neighborhoods, because that's where a lot of the power lies, and that's where a lot of the resources lie. And I would also say Minneapolis schools, because I worked on the school boards. I, I worked with the schools in a number of different ways, worked at Nellie Stone Johnson, a number of different schools, and try to make for sure that the schools follow our children and that they knew that without decent, affordable housing, that the parents could not show up to the school meetings. If our kids did not have decent uniforms, they could not show up to school, read and learn. And if they didn't have hot food in their stomach. So I worked with a number, it was hard for me to answer that, because I was just like, how many minutes I got, Ms. Bridget? And most currently, the Phyllis Foundation, that's down there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do you need to, I'll read the question or no?
No, I got it. Javon Norrington, and a couple of things I've been proud of, proud of being a part of and the privilege of being a part of is, had the privilege of building some good relationships with Urban League, U-Rock, North Point, all, all in the realm of public safety initiatives, and also with the violence prevention work, violence intervention work, being a part of that. Also, being part of the pilot program of Little Street Reach, or Street Reach goes up, pilot program for the park board. I was one of the first people working on doing that. And just a lot of the grassroots roots and the groundwork as far as when it comes to doing youth outreach and violence prevention and gang violence prevention work. And then also building some good relationships with people in the community that's also, that's been doing the work before me, that's an inspiration. Like his relationships, like, one of the early on people who believed in me early on was Reverend Mack. He opened up his church doors to let me run a couple of my programs out there, where I was hosting youth men's healing group and youth men, youth groups. So he was an early supporter of that, and he also connected a lot of guys and brothers that he was mentoring, and helped connect them to jobs. So it became an ongoing thing that's, that he's currently doing today, and I'm still a part of connecting guys with those jobs. So yeah, just, you know, being part of the community. Oh, and renewable energy cars, ran by the brother Jamais Staples. I'm blessed to have that relationship with him, because we have been doing our trunk or treat events at his, right there, at his spot on. This will be our third year, and then also we've done our, our free, free self-defense classes for women. We did that out of there too. And also, we've done, with Urban League, we've done, this will be our third year, also doing a toy giveaway for Les Bridges families in North Minneapolis. So thank you all for having me on.
So our next question, we're actually gonna have one of our youth civic leaders, Kayden Cochran, or Kayden Corcoran, actually, ask this question.
Me and all the youth civic leaders want to know, how do you plan on reaching out to the youth?
Okay, so Andrea Young again. So my goal has been, lately, I've been contacting the schools and going into the school to actually talk to the youth. I used to work for Cookie Cards, so I have a relationship with them, and I've had the opportunity to go back and do some talking to the youth there. Again, I partner with USI, which is Urban Strategy, they're inside of Heritage Park, and I work heavily with the youth, like Green Garden Bakery is another organization, or it's a business, actually, inside of the Heritage Park Neighborhood, working with them. But my main goal is just to, like, reach out to them any way that I can, host events that are tailored to them and making sure that they're actually engaged. I, of course, want to make sure that they are understanding of politics, so making them know what politics, you know, how important local politics are, as well as, you know, as they go up the branch. But yeah, keeping them engaged, investing in them, and spending time talking to them in their fashion setting.
Amber Frederick, thank you for the question, that's awesome. Well, first, I want to say, as someone who is a former youth, that is, that is the, that is the, one of the biggest things that I think we miss as a community is how fundamental it is to involve our young people in the process. I was able to caucus as a seventeen-year-old, so I was actually able to get involved in the process. If you're eighteen by election day, you can participate in the process of caucusing. So I just want to say to any youth here that that opportunity is available to you right now, if you're gonna be eighteen by election day. But as far as just youth engagement, having conversations, inviting you into the process, I think is one of the things that is the most important to me, feeling like not only are, are people of voting age have a choice, right, in our city council elections and our decisions, but we're making those decisions because our young people are gonna be affected by them. So I plan to host monthly meetings, where I sit down and talk just like this with our neighborhood in various neighborhoods to make sure everybody has a chance to attend those meetings. And everybody is welcome, and everybody is welcome to have, answer, have questions, give their input. I'll give answers at that, at that level, and just make those relationships community, community-wide. Not to neglect this, this section of the room, but you seem to be over there. But yeah, I'm a, I'm a twenty-four-year-old candidate, so I'm a Gen Z candidate. I'm energetic, I'm ready to work, I'm ready to engage young people in the process, because I believe that their voice is the future. So when we're investing in our youth, when we're investing in our young people, we're gonna see that. We're gonna see that power rise up through you. So I hope to have more conversations with everyone and, and pop out to those community events. Thanks for the question, Corcoran.
All right, Miles Wilson. And I do believe it's a tailored approach. I believe in meeting young people where they're at. As somebody who's thirty, as a father, who has a five-year-old, I understand where she's at right now, and she is very technology savvy. So that's one side of it, is being, is utilizing technology and the advances of where technology is at. That's where it seems to be a lot of interest. And also, from, again, my work with the Young People's Task Force is understanding what their concerns are, speaking their language, understanding their language, and, and following through. I think that a lot of young people are often lifted up and let down. And I think that's a big part of what we need to do, not only as candidates or as, as council or as a part of any organizations, but as a community, is like Amber had mentioned, lift our young people up and listen to them. I mean, they have great ideas. We try to push through a youth center in this ward that we fought for on behalf of those young people, because that's what they said they wanted. And with that fight, we were rejected by the school board, if I'm being honest. But we still continue to fight for them. And again, it's that follow-through of youth, that's what they wanted. It wasn't something that was gonna serve me at this age and point in my life, but something that they said they wanted from tutoring to recreations and support systems. And again, so I think that it's just meeting with them where they're at and tailoring their approach to understanding their language. So, thank you.
Pearl Born. As a champion for youth intervention, um, meeting young people where they are, validating their life experiences, being where the youth are. I'm a mother of six, my kids range from age thirty-two to nine. So, it goes up at my house, it's always like a birthday party, okay? Um, but I love young people, so I'm gonna be where they are. I'm gonna be in the schools, I'm in the parks, I'm at the birthday parties, I'm walking my dog, I'm talking to them and making them feel a part of the community. Um, it's about magnifying our young people's voices, because if we don't get it right, they gonna have a lot to clean up, okay? So, I'm very instrumental in ensuring that they have safe and brave spaces, creating a lot of different opportunities for them to ensure that their wants, desires, and dreams are valued. That's my commitment to young people, that's my commitment to my family, that's my commitment to this community. Thank you.
E. Charles B. Burnett. Um, I like Pearl too, and I'm a mother of six, and raised from thirty-two down to fifteen, um, and a grandmother. And so, I believe in young people, as I stated earlier, I started out as a young civil worker back in, back in Chicago, Illinois. So, I believe young people matter, I believe they need to be at the table. We should not make decisions about them without them. Their voice matter, that we cannot do this for them without them being at the table, right? And so, yes, we know that young people go to schools, we know that young people be at parks. But one thing that I've started out in my career at was at EJJ, the Extended Juvenile Justice Center, right? And so, where they have our young people down there, you know, they get flagged, and they stick down there until they twenty-one, right? So, I believe in meeting young people where they at. If it's at the jail, I'm gonna meet them there. If it's out here when they getting picked up for stealing these cops, I'm gonna meet them there. If they standing on the corner, if we call the shoebox boy, I'm gonna meet them where they exactly at. Because guess what? It doesn't matter whether you doing programming at North Common, at Farview, I'm gonna go up here to Plymouth, uh, the PYC, because I would have a number of alternative high schools, right? So, we got like three alternative high schools within the ward, and so a lot of our kids go to those high schools. And so, we have to make for sure that we not just going to North High, and we going to Patrick Henry. I mean, I'm, if not Patrick Henry, no more.
Camden.
Thank you. That, that we also are going to those alternative schools, and that we are meeting our young people where they at. That when we see them out here, when we see them in community just huddled up, I go up to them, I black hair, they black hair, you see what you doing? Yeah, mm, what you doing? So, therefore, I'm gonna meet them behind McDonald's, I'm gonna meet them right there where they at, because I come behind McDonald's, I pick up your trash. So, I'm gonna meet them where they at. It doesn't matter whether you at the school, the park, the jail, or down there Hennepin County, getting ready to get served or sentenced. I'm gonna be there.
Javon Norrington.
And I too, I intend on meeting young people where they at. Um, that's, that's what I currently do now. Uh, I currently host, uh, a youth, youth intervention group that deals with youth that struggle with, uh, struggle with drug addiction and, um, making bad choices. So, we try to, we have men that's present, it's called Still, Sharp, and Steal, each one teach one. So, it's, um, you know, not, we don't profess to have all the answers, it's more about us listening to them. Uh, hearing, hearing their voices, hearing what they have to say, and then how can we help? And just, uh, making good on those promises to help. Um, that's why I promise to do a string of initiatives, a string of initiatives to, to be a supportive youth, create youth activities, uh, make sure that you have a, a, a healthy way to express themselves, because I see that's, that's can sometimes be a struggle. And that, and that struggle to know how to correctly express yourself, it can lead to, um, unpopular ways of them expressing themselves. So, when you, when you create healthy spaces like that, you support them in that realm, you know, you, the out, the outcome looks a lot different, you know? Um, I've, I've been blessed to be able to bring certain groups of young kids together that normally wouldn't cross certain barriers at the North Side. But they come together and they, you know, they, they talk their differences out because of having an outlet to do so. So, I, I intend on doing more of that throughout the North Side. Uh, because I see that that is what, uh, when it comes to the youth, it's them having creative outlets, outlets to express themselves, more things to do, and just more option, more alternative, and also good leadership. You know, they need to have the good, the good people in front of them that understand them, and that's listening to them, not coming to them as though we have all the answers. It's more so listening to them, and from our experience, from our wisdom, I know.
What's one, what's one issue you have, uh, excuse me, I have a, I have a few says, I apologize. Um, what issues aim to spearhead once you're in office? Expected outcomes, how do you know you're successful?
Um, so, one issue, today I went down to the Capitol and I had a conversation with Esther, Representative Esther Abaje. Uh, Andrea Young, today I went down to the Capitol and I had a conversation with Representative Esther Abaje. Um, so one issue that is currently going into policymaking, um, is the potential of trying to stop corporations from purchasing land and buildings here and, um, making housing. So, I would love to be a part of, well, I'm gonna be a part of that process regardless of if I become city councilor or not. But to continue the work behind that process and making sure that corporations do not purchase the land here and make housing, um, unattainable or unaffordable for individuals, then it's just one, or how many?
How will you know you're successful?
How would I know? Um, I mean, I guess if they're not purchasing, and we have more local developers purchasing and, um, you know, building developments that are affordable for people to actually thrive in.
Very good.
Amber Frederick. Um, so, a one-bedroom unit here in, uh, Hennepin County and in North Minneapolis, for fair market rate, is $1,113. Yeah, which is, if you look at a mother who might have two or three children living with her in that unit, that's four mouths to feed on a potentially $2,000 a month paycheck. That doesn't leave a lot of wiggle room at all, right? It doesn't leave a lot of room at all for, uh, essentials? And then, you know, thinking about building a savings account, or thinking about building for your future. So, one thing, if I could focus on one thing, it would be lowering that fair market rate, so that our renters aren't putting over fifty percent of their income into a, into an apartment, that they'll never see that money again. Right? When you're renting a unit, that money's going to the landlord, or that money's going to the, the business that runs that building. You're not getting that money back into your own pocket. So, I know it would be successful, when I see that number start to drop, and I see more money going into the pockets of our constituents, of our neighbors, so that we can afford to pay our bills, so that we can afford to feed our kids, so that we can afford to build, uh, savings, and actually support ourselves, because renting is a, should be a viable option, right? Renting should be something that if we're gonna, we're gonna have apartment buildings around for our neighbors to live in, it should be an affordable place to live. So, I'll know it's successful when I see that number start to go down.
Michael, will you mind repeating the question one time?
Um, what's one issue you aim to spearhead once you're in office? Expected outcomes, how do you know you're, you were successful?
Okay, uh, one issue that I looked at spearhead is around public safety. Um, well, one thing that if not everybody here knows, that they will find out tonight, is that violence, uh, on the North Side has been down historically. And so, that's something to be proud of, but although, one thing that I want to also incorporate that is, um, chemical abuse. And, um, looking at public safety from a holistic point of view. Um, so by increasing, uh, support for our treatment centers such as Turning Point, that is in the heart of this ward, um, providing resources, uh, that are culturally, culturally specific, uh, such as mental health resources, um, uh, um, support systems that supplement the police department and behavioral crisis response teams, making sure that we are able to supplement, um, the entire community in ways that we have the resources that we need. And how do I know that that will be successful? Is by seeing, um, these infrastructures put up, uh, having mental health, uh, resources in the community, such as, uh, therapists, uh, in the area. Um, people taking advantage of, of Turning Point that's in the ward. Um, and also, uh, the reduction of drug abuse, drug use, and also violence, uh, as a whole. So, that's one thing I would do.
One more time.
Um, what's one issue you aim to spearhead once you're in office? Expected outcomes, how do you know you were successful?
I would like to improve the overall livability within our ward. Um, we need to improve our business district, we have a food desert, we have a pharmacy desert, and there are not a lot of thriving businesses within our corridors for individuals to shop, which takes money out of our ward, because we're going to go spin it somewhere else. So, we need to recycle the dollar within our community to ensure that our community becomes thriving. With that, it supports our public safety. With that, it supports our economic vitality, right? Um, so those are some of the things that I intend to do. Work closely with our business district, work closely with our police department to ensure that our livability within Ward Five becomes a safe and positive corridor.
E. Charles B. Burnett. Um, can you repeat the question for me again, Michael?
Um, what's one issue you aim to spearhead once you're in office? Expected outcomes, how do you know you were successful?
Um, I've already done it. Behavior crisis response, domestic violence work, the CC down at the fifth precinct, I know it works. So, I've done things and, and know the data, but I will say one thing that I aim to do, which is economic development. Um, we are, our businesses along West Broadway, we have Plymouth Avenue, we have a desert, as another, as other candidate, Ms. Moore stated, that economic development over here, we have lack of businesses, we have lack of businesses that look like us, that represent us. Not for the people to come, but for the people who's been here, right? And making sure that those businesses that are inside of people's homes right now, that they can have that space, affordable space, affordable space along the corridor, so that they can have their businesses there, right? We know that we cannot do anything without economic development, we cannot do anything about public safety without doing something about housing and business and education, right? But one thing I do know is that, um, I can't do it by myself, right? Because it takes nine to get the vote. So, I know that I'm gonna need the council member in the fourth ward, I know that I'm gonna need Councilman Vito, Councilman Rainville, and Councilman Cash, Cashman, and others, because whatever impact the fifth ward is gonna impact the fourth ward, and it's gonna impact Rainville Ward, because part of this ward sits in North Loop.
Javon Norrington, if I could focus on one thing, well, it all serves a part, it all goes back to public safety and supporting our youth. Uh, because I'm a firm believer that if you, if the youth aren't, if we aren't taking care of our youth, if we're not focusing on that part of things, and, and the safety of our community, uh, nothing else, we won't be happy as a community, in general, business won't be able to thrive. So, um, I'm a firm believer in that. So, what I intend on doing is, uh, establishing safety zones throughout our community, and that's with working with community. And then establishing, uh, public residence spaces throughout the community. And also getting more, more community leaders to help, to help organize and help facilitate these, uh, public residence spaces throughout the community, uh, to address the public safety part of it. Oh, yeah, that's, 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 if I could focus on one thing, that, that's what I would do. And then to know that it's successful is to keep those, the numbers, uh, crime down, even numbers of violence down. And I would like to, you know, I feel like I can take pride in that, because, uh, my organization and the men I work with, along with other groups, uh, I believe we contribute toward, towards those numbers going down when it comes down to the violence. And that's, that's what, uh, the, the, the techniques that we use, which is dealing with it head-on, and how we, uh, the violence interruption technique, throughout the whole fear violence training, the whole practice of that, uh, working with the, working with the participants. I think all of those efforts that's, that's been done over North Minneapolis, uh, with the groups like We Push For Peace, uh, Mother's Love, Restoration, uh, Stripped Group, Mad Dads, um, we, we gotta acknowledge that, and Twenty-One Days of Peace. Um, we owe them a lot, because that is why we see those numbers down. Because, uh, if it wasn't for us out there combating those issues, who the, who knows what those numbers would be? So, it would be more of that, that's for my folks.
So, we're gonna actually come right back to you, Mr. Norrington. Um, how long have you been called a Ward Five, or how long have you called Ward Five home? Please share your most memorable experience you've had in Ward Five.
Most memorable?
Well, I moved up here in ninety-six. Like I said, all my kids are born here. Um, I have a lot of good memories here. Um, a lot of good memories here, a lot of good opportunity, I've built a lot of good relationships. And, um, I'm, I'm really grateful and thankful for some of my early on supporters, people who gave me a chance to, to give me a backbone to work, and show my, my strengths and my abilities. Uh, people like, like I say, Reverend Mack, uh, Sasha Cott, uh, when, when she was head of, of OVP, uh, how she gave, gave brothers like myself a, a chance, opportunity to be out here in the streets and combat some of these issues. And I've grown a love for, uh, just the, the, the relationships, uh, Brother Jamil, the one, you know, we call CEO, Coach. Um, just building those relationships with guys like that, that do the work, they inspire me. So, I, without them, it wouldn't be me, because they inspire me. And I'm, I'm thankful for all those great inspirations, and those are, those are some of my greatest memories, just working with all those different people.
Ms. E. again. Um, my greatest memory and being here in the fifth ward, uh, I moved here in twenty-ten. So, my greatest memory would be the tornado. Even though I know that it was a tornado, but the greatest memory was because I seen people come out. I seen neighbors, no, regardless of what color you was, what ethnicity you was, what religion you was. We all came out, helped each other move the trees off the houses, off your cars, so that was the best. That was one of the best, the first most thing. And I saw black men taking their kids to school, when the report said that they did not. I saw people scraping the weeds out the sidewalk, when they said we did not care over in North Minneapolis. What I seen was different than what the report said. So, that was my greatest memory. Another greatest memory was twenty-twenty. Twenty-twenty, I, once again, I saw the people in the ward come together. I saw the people in the ward protect each other, protect us when they got into a shootout on Broadway. They protected us, they protected us, our community came through. So, the beautiful part that I remember is twenty-ten when the tornado happened, and twenty-twenty, when the silver unrest happened. Because you know why? I seen community come out, and it did make a difference of your color, your religion, your financial background, whether you was married, whether you was a renter, or whether you was a homeowner. And that's what stands out to me about the fifth ward, is the people, and how they stick together no matter what. And when times are hard, we gonna come together, we gonna feed each other, we gonna find some water, we gonna go find some peppers for our babies, we gonna go find some formula, when Cubs, we couldn't go to Cubs, we gonna go find it and bring it here. So, that's the most memorable, if the community ended on the hard times, because I saw people coming together.
How long, how long have you lived, or, excuse me, how long have you called Ward Five home? Please share your most memorable experience you've had in Ward Five.
My family moved to Ward Five in nineteen-eighty from the South Side of Chicago, lived right in Tangle Town. My uncle owned several properties there, and that became my home. Um, I left and moved out of, out of Ward Five, and it's a funny story, because my mom moved all the way to the Richfield area off of Sixty-first and Nicollet. And I remember my aunt staying right across the street, and she, the house is still there. And I remember my aunt staying right across the street, and she, the house is still there, still family-owned, right across the street from North Commons. So, at the age of nine years old, I got my twenty cents together, and I'm hopping on the MTC, and I'm coming down the eighteen to catch the five to the north side, okay? And I had my little brother with me in tow, all right? Because we wanted to go to North Commons to go swimming, okay? We had been taking swim lessons there, this is when the dive board, diving boards were there, okay? So, I wanted to go over there and go swimming, and my cousin Lisa was like, yeah, you can come over here. There were no cell phones, there was no nothing. But there was a sense of peace that this is where I wanted to be and where I needed to be, and I knew I could get here with ease. And that's the safety that I want to see back in our community, because I hopped on that bus and I came right on over here, swam, ate good, laughed, had a good time. Did I get in trouble later? Probably so. But it was all worth it to be right here in Ward Five, and I'm happy to call Ward Five my home. I dreamed about owning a DuPont house from the time that I was a little girl, and I got me a DuPont house.
All right, uh, Miles Wilson. How long have I called Ward Five Home? Thirty years. How old am I? Thirty, so my entire life? Uh, most memorable thing I can think about for myself as a, as a Ward Five resident would be the programs, the youth program, I kind of go back to that, um, from participating in youth programs and sports, uh, from Hospitality House to Powell, um, at Harrison, uh, North Commons, and not just about playing in sports or working at the park board, but it was about the mentorship that I had from the coaches that turned into lifelong mentors. One, Coach Rucker, who I'll still call, call coach to this day here, um, is somebody who's been there for me every step of the way, no matter what path I was going down in life. But that's something that's most memorable to me because it really has shaped me into being who I am today. So, I would say that's my most memorable thing about Ward Five.
Amber Frederick, again. Uh, not only do I think I'm the youngest up here, I believe I'm the youngest to Ward Five. Um, I've lived in Minneapolis uh for about seven years now, and last April, um, when I was a, a former renter in Uptown, I was searching for my next place to live as a single woman. Um, again, like I mentioned, it was very expensive. Uh, and so, when I came across the City of Lakes Community Land Trust, uh, my housing search started in Northside. Um, I wanted to move to Northside not only because I found the sense of community to be really attractive, but also because I felt like I could live and establish a family here. Um, I sort of was planning for the future in a sense. So, I've been um here for about a year, and my best memory was probably the day that I moved here, when I was, when I just came from the, the City of Lakes office. My hand was sore from signing and signing and signing, and I came up to uh the front door and there was a woman, um, and an older woman, and she was pushing a stroller, and I was like, hi, I just moved in, I just moved, this is my house, I just moved here. Um, nice to meet you. Um, and that's how I met my neighbor and her mom, who also lives in the ward, and her, her new baby. And that was my first friend and my first introduction to the community, really, uh, to meet my neighbors. And it, and it's a relationship that I still have, so I'm really grateful for, for that experience. And as a young person, again, like my investment is in building more of those experiences, having more opportunities with my, my neighbors to build those relationships and have uh that sense of community and that sense of, of trust. Just grow and elaborate on that. Thank you.
So, great, now again. Um, so I'm thirty-one years old. I am from North Minne, or the fifth ward as well. Uh, I left when I went to college in Tennessee, so that was for four years, came back, came back to North Minneapolis. Um, I moved away recently in September, and I'm breaking my lease with God's good grace and no issues to move back April first, so I guess, you know, I've been away for a couple of months. Um, but yeah, my most memorable moment would be uh spending time with my family, like going to Juneteenth when it was on Inwood. I really enjoyed that. Um, Our Street, so like now I work for North Point, and I'm their West Broadway Coordinator, and I'm a part of helping put on um, the Our Streets portion of North Point. So, being from um North Minneapolis and going to events as a child, and now being an adult and actually being a part of putting on the events that happen in the ward, um, is probably also another most memorable thing for me. So, yeah.
I'm just gonna call individuals now randomly. Um, this question is going to be, what have you done in the public safety sector in the last two years? And I will actually start.
Um, as far as public safety goes, um, I haven't done much work for public safety, I won't lie. Um, I can say that when it comes to like maybe like getting out and advocating or protesting or anything like that, I show up in that way. Um, but I have not put a lot of work into uh public safety. Um, I will say when the young man passed away in Heritage Park, though, um, he was shot by his neighbor. Um, we worked with Urban Strategies to try to um get a, a violence interrupted team into the community. They didn't stick around long. Um, so I worked with them for that. And then as far as, I'm trying to think, I guess when it comes to like the safety in the buildings where I work, we have a community safety meeting, so I do meet with them and we talk about issues. Um, we're gonna be meeting with Jeremiah Ellison as well, as well as uh Jacob Mayor, Mayor Frye, um, to kind of address some of the issues that are happening in Heritage Park, but beyond like Heritage Park, I haven't done much with public safety.
Uh, Miles Wilson. Um, my experience in public safety in the last few years, um, it starts with the Unity Community Mediation Team. Um, where a lot of that work was focused around the Memorandum of Understanding. And for those that don't know, uh, the memorandum was originally created in two thousand and three. Um, we looked to revise it in twenty-twenty, um, which was around um the police department and working on certain issues specifically to focus on training development, mentorship, um, recruitment, use of force, are a few of the action items that we've worked on, which we have been very successful in, in terms of implementing that into the, in a side um by the interim chief Amelia Huffman, as well as the chair Ian Bethel. Um, so now that's a living document within the city as a part of Action Consent decree. Um, also with public safety, as part of the Young People's Task Force, one thing that we identified was the DNA being taken by juveniles, which we actually went through a long list of research to figure out that that was not um illegal uh for law enforcement to take juvenile DNA without any uh consent, judge warrant, um, or anything of that nature. Um, I actually, it's been a lot with me a lot to remind me how far we've came, because this is a bill that we had, that we took the process of learning, um, and actually put this bill through the state. We're now, as of uh August first, twenty-twenty-four, that juvenile DNA cannot be taken without a judge warrant. Uh, public safety over the last few years, so thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Um, what contributions or what have you, um, kind of work have you done in the past two years to public safety?
Um, yes. Each other very much again, E. Um, the last two years. Um, I'm gonna start out with behavior crisis response, right? BCR. Extending BCR to make sure that BCR is in all precincts, right? And making sure that BCR is fully staffed, right? I'm gonna start out with that first. I'm also starting out with, again, the domestic violence worker that we have down here at the, at the fourth precinct with Inspector Adams. Inspector Adams asked for more, the community asked for another CC, and we got them another CC, right? Um, and also, I would say, um, working with Inspector Adams and making sure that, you know, um, his son does the footballs, right? And so, up here at the park, we wanted to make sure that when our kids up here at the park play in football, basketball, whatever they're doing at the park, partnering with them to make sure that our kids and our families got safe passage, right? And that they are safe while they there, right? Um, I will also say, community trauma response, making sure that as one of the candidates spoke about the young man who got uh murdered down there in Heritage Park, at that particular time, I'm gonna back up, because it started out down there in Vito's Ward, when a, when a young girl called nine-one-one, and nine-one-one came, showed up and shot up the house because her dad had a gun because he lost his job. That's how we got community trauma response, is because we kept having incidents, and it was people showing up, and mainly it was Lisa, Mother's Love, as a scene responder, and we wasn't giving her anything. So, how do we work with that? How do we make sure that our churches, what we have in Miss Tr, Baby Trinity and, and the young boy who got killed, have no scrims, have in the, the Davi, right? London, right? And making sure that those parents who couldn't afford to buy their baby the dress, that they couldn't afford to buy their baby the suit. So, when it comes to public safety, it takes all of us. It's just that MPD, it's Cub Foods, it's the parks, it's the fire, it's OME, it's everybody, it's KIPs. It takes all of us to be a part of public safety. It's not just this or that, it's this and that.
Yes, Ms. Bridger, thank you. Ms. Lisa.
Yes, Robert Norriton. Uh, public safety initiatives that I've probably been a part of over the past few years, um, I have the privilege and opportunity to work with uh organizations in the community like North Point, help them with their public safety, uh, Urban League, uh, U-Rock, uh, Northside Healed Space, and uh Northside Achievement Zone. So, all these initiatives were all in the area of um safe passage, making sure when they would have certain events, that guests can get to and from safely, uh, in effect. Then also what my group does now currently, Spec Group, um, we still do youth violence prevention work, uh, we still doing that. And uh, just, you know, I, I, that's, that's, I've been doing that for twenty-plus years, I'd say, as far as addressing public safety issues in the community. So, I can, I, my plan is to continue doing that, if not just amplify that and working all with you all and building more strong relationships doing it.
Last two years, with respect to public safety, I was the coordinator for the City of Brooklyn Park Youth Outreach and Intervention Services. Um, formed a wonderful relationship with our juvenile police division inside of the schools, creating corridors, safe and positive corridors for our young people because they move from North Minneapolis, South Minneapolis, through Brooklyn Park, to Brooklyn Center. They move these go-cards, help them go, okay? And whether it be on the buses or on, you know, in cars, we're there, we're there at the games. We're bringing young people out to the dome in Brooklyn Park to ensure that they got field time, forging relationships with those individuals, and again, with our police department, because my work came from the City of Minneapolis Youth Coordinating Board, through with the City of Brooklyn Park, mayor of Brooklyn Park, April Graves, shout out April, made sure that we were able to get very instrumental work done with YCB and our relationship with the police, the downtown council, which led to our Peacemaker Awards, all of those wonderful things. So, I always tell everyone on our team, shirt on or shirt off, the work is there, we're always doing it. So, it never stops, it's just going.
Amber Frederick, um, my approach to public safety, like my approach to most everything that I do, comes from the person first. So, my work as a housing coordinator involves sometimes youth, you know, having the police called on them, and then I get called saying, you know, your resident, you're the person, the young person that you work with has been causing problems or has been doing X, Y, and Z. So, it's this person-centered approach to public safety that I think is gonna be very instrumental into how we make changes. So, just recently, the other week, um, it was suggested that I elevate this young person's um issues to the police, and knowing that there are other alternatives out there, frankly, is the only reason the police were not called. Right? Knowing that mental health crisis intervention is available is the only reason that this young person didn't have the cops called on him, because it's a scary thing when you're going through something, when you have that, you know, onset of mental health uh illness or psychosis, can be really scary to have not only someone you don't know show up, but someone with a gun, the police show up at your door. So, knowing that those resources like COPE are out there to be an advocate and show up when someone is in crisis is a big part of keeping our public safe. It's a big part of why this young man is receiving the care that he needs instead of going to jail. Because when something, when something like mental health is taking over, you don't always know what's right and what's wrong. So, these, these intervention programs like COPE, um, like uh Avivo, which is outside of the ward but expanding, um, Avivo to our ward is something I would like to see. Organizations like that that offer care and services uh in a more comprehensive approach.
All right. So, um, next question is, and I'm actually must speak relative to this, because I used to work in housing in this neighborhood for years. And I'll tell you, recall in three-one-one a lot of the time and utilizing those services. Um, how do you plan to prepare the city and reduce city garbage and level needed to close Herc? And.
That's your specialty.
That's one of them. Um, so yeah, so I work closely with the Environmental Justice Table currently, where we are already working to get the trash run and shut down. Um, so, we actually have a meeting on Friday, we're representative for Lee, where we are now planning um to figure out ways to get the county working, um, and moving toward that actual shutdown date. Um, they're not returning phone calls, they're not responding to emails. Um, so we've been fortunate to build that relationship with Representative Fu Lee, who is now willing to hold back on funding if need be, um, to actually get the incinerator to, um, shut down. So, I'm behind that.
They're co-pilot. Thanks, co-pilot. Um, Amber Frederick. Yeah, the Herc, the Herc being shut down is, is important, and I think what is less known is that in order for the Herc to be shut down, we need to reduce that trash intake. So, one thing that I'm spearheading, that I would love to see other areas of the city take on, is moving away from single-use plastic. Single-use plastic, when burned, creates those toxic fumes that we breathe in, right? So, in moving to, towards compostable plastics, bioplastics, and having the ability for those to be readily available, not just for your to-go containers, not just for your single-use straws that we're gonna throw away, but for products that we use every day. We have major manufacturers in Minnesota. Those major manufacturers can be using products that don't sit in the planet for five hundred, six hundred plus years. We can move away from bioplastics, and I think that that is very instrumental, not just to the Herc uh project, right? Creating less trash, but for us in general, right? We want to see less trash blowing around on our streets, having compostable products and materials in our everyday products that we use, laundry detergent, think dish soap, think, you know, our, our trash bags, those kind of things. Having uh less plastic in general not only is good for us, but it helps move that project forward. So, in order for the Herc to really be shut down, we need to start with that, our single-use plastic reduction. So, that's something that I would start. Uh, there's an ordinance in, in the state where you cannot, I believe you cannot actually direct businesses uh to move away from uh plastic bags. So, hence the p, plastic bag tax that we pay when we use plastic bags here at Cub. You pay a tax, right, for every single plastic bag you use. So, we need to do something new, right? We We need to not just de-centivize plastic, but change the way that plastic is made. Bioplastics, corn, things that decompose, that leave the planet.
All right, Miles Wilson, um, and I agree, uh, with the things that have been mentioned, but I also think about, uh, what are some different new innovative ways that we can supplement? Um, things like, uh, uh, this, I think of a green team. Um, as I mentioned, back to my history of team teamwork, that was a big part of our job, was to clean the parks specifically. But how can we also clean our streets, not just in Ward Five, but in Ward Four and throughout Minneapolis? And as Amber has mentioned, we don't want to see trash flowing around. We want to make sure it's going to the right place. You do want compostable, uh, materials. But creating a team that creates jobs, you know, it could be for young people, it could be for, um, anybody, honestly, but creating a green team that supports, you know, these initiatives and these efforts to make sure our trash is picked up, to make sure our, uh, compost is going to the right place, recycling is doing the right thing. And so that would be my way of, uh, being innovative and to support these efforts, so.
Um, how do you plan to prepare the city and reduce city garbage and, or to level needed to close HERC?
Well, HERC got to close down because HERC has caused a lot of hurt. Um, and being an EJCC fellow, we spearheaded the initiative of closing HERC. Um, it was a little bit before my time as part of EJCC and the Public Policy Project. However, in order for that to happen, we have to become a zero-waste, sustainable city. And I plan to do that by looking at the models of other cities that have those initiatives currently in place. Yes, there is a city ordinance about not wanting to use plastic bags and whatever else, but I think with the more education that we have around that, we can have our own reusable bags, we can have our own to-go containers and become more sustainable in more ways than we know. There's lots of ways to, uh, recycle furniture, there's lots of ways to recycle cardboard, where cardboard is also being used to compost gardens, to help improve the soil quality for gardening and planting, for community gardens and things like that. So it's important that we start to educate ourselves individually and then make those moves collectively as a city in order to reduce our carbon footprint so that we're able to, um, improve the air quality and get rid of all of the particular matter.
Um, Ms. E again, and yes, I do support the HERC, um, closing down because, uh, the fifth ward has the highest rate of asthma. We, we have the highest rate of asthma and I have children who have asthma and grandchildren who have asthma. And we know that, that that plays a part of our environment and our clean air. The city of Minneapolis already has the Clean Air Plan, that already has Climate Action Plan and the Viren Plan that's, that's inside the current 2040 plan, right? So we do have a zero-waste plan that's already in effect, that's gonna be, um, changing actually in 2025, 2026. Once one of us get elected, it's gonna be changing, right? So when it comes to the HERC and the incinerator, first of all, this ward, we have a high number of residents, a high number of tenants, a high number of apartment buildings. So we have to educate, we have to begin to educate our developers as they develop and build these properties. They have to build them in a way that the tenants can combust their trash in a way so where they have, they have the, the different cycles, right? Right now, our BLO building, the Common Bond building, they're not set up like that. Our new building down there by the, um, by the city impound lot, it's not set up like that. So we have to first work with the developers as they continue to build these apartments and build, that we work with them to make sure that the tenants in those apartments have access to do the, to do the proper, uh, trash recycling. Also, we have to educate our tenants. And we have to make for sure that we bring them stuff and constantly, constantly come out and engage with them about, you put your food here, you put your recyclables here, things like that. So we have to do education and we also have to provide the resources. We cannot educate without the resources. The, the people in attendance, our tenants need the resources, property developer need the resources, and homeowners need the resources. Because when you think about recycling and you think about combustible, you get those cards in the mail, most of the people in Fifth Ward throw those cards in the garbage. So how do we continue on educating? How do we continue on providing those resources? Thank you, Ms. E.
I support the HERC closing, uh, it sounds like, well, enough of bad stuff about it. But when it comes to it, um, when it comes to issues that I'm not very shocked about, I'm not gonna pretend like I'm, like I know it all. I'm gonna listen to the experts and listen to the feedback of the community and, and with constituents, see what's the best plan, what's in the best interest of the community and for the people. Uh, so when it comes to stuff like that about the garbage, uh, I, I heard some great things up here, um, some great solutions. Uh, very supportive of the one, um, getting youth people involved with picking up trash and stuff like that, making that into a job. I like that idea. Um, but I would say, when it comes to things like that, I will listen to the experts, I will listen to the feedback of the community, and then make us a solid, uh, you know, solid judgment on what we should do by talking with the constituents and what's best for the people and for the community.
All right, um, a hot topic right now, as we're just a block off of West Broadway, is gonna be the Metro Blue Line, right? So talk to me a tiny bit about what you, um, the impacts that you think that could be both positive and negative to other community and how you're willing to address that.
Okay. All right, so Andrea Young, um, again, I am a member of the Blue Line Coalition, where we advocate heavily about the train being about the people and not just the train or a service. Um, personally, I, I am in support of the train, just the thought of, of, you know, thinking of the future and moving forward. I think that it's personally gonna provide the opportunity for constituents in the ward who don't have vehicles to be able to maneuver around. Um, it's gonna create opportunities as far as being able to go to other parts of Minnesota. Um, as far as some of the work I've done behind that, with that $10 million that I went down to the Capitol on the part of the Blue Line and a Blue Line Coalition that we advocated for, we're gonna be putting that back into the community to help build jobs, housing, um, and it's gonna be for along the corridor as long as the, uh, previously impacted route. Um, I know that the, in other meetings that I'm in, the members of the community are kind of banking on the money that is coming into that, into the ward from the train being developed. Um, so there's potential for economic development to also come out of that. Um, so yeah, I mean, I think that when I listen to community, there is like a battle or a divide on people wanting it and not wanting it. Um, so I think that a divide is a negative. Um, but again, I do think there are a lot of positives that could potentially come out of the train coming into the ward, um, and the opportunities that it will create, so, yeah.
Amber Frederick again. We've seen in Minneapolis specifically and in our neighbor city, St. Paul, initiatives like this absolutely decimate and destroy black and brown communities. And it feels like the train is causing like a literal divide, but they're displacing people, communities, businesses. Sound familiar, right? Redlining and the, the highway that was put through the Rondo neighborhood. What's that? Déjà vu, yeah. So it feels reminiscent of policies of the past, right? The green line, the blue line, these trains have a possibility of, of adding and, and really engaging our communities in a lot of ways, but that's not what the project's about. I don't think the project feels very rooted in our community, in Northside. Uh, it feels very divisive and it will take away and strip those communities of their ability to connect with their neighbors across the street, to drum up business, um, there. So as it stands as a project, it needs development. It needs redevelopment before it even goes to a vote. I don't think that there's any person or any family who wants to be displaced. We love our community, we want to stay here, we don't want to move. So if we're thinking about the future, we should be thinking about how to actually engage more of our neighbors and more of our constituents in a way that does keep us here. And it also does connect us. But right now, the Blue Line is trying to connect through us, right? It's trying to take people through our neighborhood instead of keeping it here. So we need time to talk about it and adjust the plan when it comes to the Blue Line.
Miles Wilson, um, pros, um, the concept of connecting Minneapolis, North Minneapolis to other ends of the city, um, but when it benefits us, I mean, cons. Uh, we're talking about, as mentioned, displacement, we're talking about public safety issues. I mean, we've seen on these lines time before, um, issues with it being on the street level. We've seen issues with the platforms, we've seen issues with the safety with on, on the train itself. Um, so I think that there, as mentioned, um, it's time to, uh, talk about some of these maybe alternatives, you know? Maybe, um, swapping out the train with the, uh, rapid bus line, possibly. Um, because I support equitable transportation, things that service community, um, in ways that make sense. So again, if you're gonna have a train that has only two stops through the entire ward, that's not equitable for this area because we do become, as mentioned, a pass-through. So, um, I do, I support equitable transportation in the aspect of, if, if there's a plan of action that's actually provides support that shows that these funds and dollars will go to development and go to, um, anti-displacement, then I'm okay with that. But if it's not, if there's no proof or no backing behind that, then I can't support, uh, things that will tear apart the community, so.
Hello, Pearl Warren. I'm not a fan of the train. Um, we don't have a transportation desert here in Ward Five. There is plenty of transportation that moves through Ward Five from our microbuses to our regular metro transit buses. Um, rapid transit would definitely be a better measure and a better use of community dollars in order to move people around. If anything, there's probably some apologies that need to be in order to send that train down Olson Highway, which is where it was supposed to go a long time ago. But I guess there was a disagreement between some mayors way back when and whoever that's before my time, that they need to apologize and get over it so we can move forward. They already displaced everybody up and down Olson Highway, putting it up and down 21st Avenue, puts a lot of children in danger, puts a lot of young people in danger. All the money that's getting ready to get put into North Commons Park, we got a slew of families that are on the opposite side, on the north side of Broadway, that it puts our children at risk crossing over those train tracks, puts our children at risk crossing over the train tracks to get to Cub Foods. The next grocery store aside, you know, the north side of Broadway is nine blocks on Lowry. So how are we gonna be able to get what our community members need? Elders and walkers, thinking about all of those different things. It definitely brings a great divide. It's not gonna be any fun until somebody gets hurt and then there's gonna be a lot of apologies. Let's take a preventative method and have some further discussions about this train and not make that train a part of our immediate plans here for the city.
Ms. E again, um, when we talk about the Blue Line, so we need to prioritize. We need to prioritize when you're talking about the Blue Line because we need to take a lesson from St. Paul, right? When they did, when they did St. Paul and they did the Light Rail along University, we need to realize that we lost a lot of businesses, you know? We lost a lot of businesses, we lost homes, people lost their homes, right? And so when I think about transit, I'm, I come from Chicago where you can catch the bus and the train all the way to the north side, the west side, the south side, all the way to Dalton, Illinois. You can catch public transportation and get around anywhere you want to in the city of Chicago, which is double the size of Minneapolis, right? And so when I think of transit, yes, the ward, our numbers here in the ward says that we have a number of transit riders that actually ride the transit. But I also was on, before Councilman Vito got here, it was Councilman Cunningham and Lynda Higgins when they was talking about the D-line and the B-line and all of those lines. And unfortunately, the Light Rail had been on books for over 20 years. And a lot of us don't understand that the city, the state and the county, we make plans 20 years out. 20 years out. When we did the census, we already know what's gonna happen. When we did those census numbers in 2020, what's gonna happen in 2040? So unfortunately, plans are made 20 to 25 years before Amber was even born. That Light Rail was already on the boat. It was already on the dock, it was already sitting there. And just like Pearl said, yes, it was supposed to come down Olson. However, we did not make a deal with the, uh, with the railroads. Because the railroads books been on there since 1750 and so they own all they land. And nobody never said, hey, railroads, can we buy some of your land back so we can build some rapid transit? And so the railroad said, no. So yes, we have to take a lesson learned and we have to make sure we think about our climate. Because our climate and our young people matter.
Javon Norrington, um, my reply is gonna be pretty short. I say no, I like the idea of the fast buses, uh, seeing my community. Um, the idea of it, it just, it would just be passing through, not really engaging with the community. And then also, uh, it seems like the community ain't happy with it. So I just don't think they're happy with it, uh, so that's my word.
We're coming down to the last five minutes of this experience. Um, I will just keep this to a minute. Just think of, when you're thinking of building up your community, what are gonna be your top three priorities? And I will start with Mr. Wilson.
Top three priorities?
Top three priorities.
All right. Miles Wilson, um, my top three priorities are, as I mentioned at the beginning, constituent services, um, valuing and hearing every voice from the ideas, um, perspective, concerns. Uh, public safety, as I've kind of talked about over the course of tonight, uh, with the background that does support public safety, that is another big concern of mine. Um, and then equitable growth solutions. So as a part of some of those questions that you've heard tonight, supporting things that do support the community, that do support us as a ward, as a whole, from small business development, from, uh, public transportation and homeownership. So those will be my priorities for my candidacy.
Okay, um, Andrea Young again. So my top three would definitely be infrastructure. I believe that the conversation of the Blue Line needs to continue, um, being a part of a lot of the work that's happening behind that and knowing that we actually do do engagement, it just feels like maybe the people in this room haven't been to any of that informational sessions. Um, I am focused on, um, development and, uh, disparities. So again, shutting down a trash burner and creating career pathways and, um, the development that will come into North Minneapolis. Um, and then I would say, uh, economic growth. So yeah, making sure that we build our community up into an actual, like, fully thriving community that has restaurants and, um, entertainment and places to spend our dollar and put our dollar back into.
Repeat the question, please.
Um, what are your, uh, building community, what are gonna be your top three priorities?
First and foremost, constituent services because, uh, this job is all about constituent services to make for sure that I'm here for my constituents and that constituents look different because you have businesses, you have, you have tenants, renters, you have homeowners, and you have people that's born to come, right? And so that constituent service look different for individuals in different buckets. Also, I would say economic development because we are in a desert, my ward is in a desert. I need businesses to offset the property taxes, right? Our property taxes are high over here. We have a high number of seniors still living in their homes, who have purchased their homes for over 20, 30 years, and their property taxes, they can't afford to continue to, to pay their property taxes because they're on a limited income. So I would say economic development, infrastructure and livability. Because without those three, you cannot put a dent in public safety.
All right, Amber Frederick, uh, First and foremost, constituency services. I see a lot of phones out here. And if you want to write this down, I will be available at my campaign phone number. This is my phone number. 612, area code 612. 96, I have it on my hand, 64. So that's my campaign phone. I take calls, I take texts. You can reach out to me with anything that does come up after today if there's something that you want to follow up on, something that you want to talk about, chat about. Please leave me a voicemail. I have a full-time job still, so I'm working on being available to you.
Build in community, your top three priorities.
Oh, top three priorities. Definitely public safety, public safety, public safety. Youth enrichment, youth development, and youth services. And then also constituent services. So first, my three mains are public safety, youth development, youth enrichment, youth engagement, and also constituent services. And then also too, part of the public safety and youth engagement, I have a plan on having an event this Saturday. I saw some stuff going on this Saturday. A couple of other organizations will come together with youth aiding, will be giving essentials and food to the community on Saturday from 2 to 5 at New Salem.
Give yourselves a round of applause for sitting through all of this. Pearl Warren. My priorities are safe, suitable, and equitable housing, public safety, constituent services, economic development, overall livability. Thank you.
So I'll give each of the candidates a last one minute for closing statements. We'll continue addressing constituents and then we'll close. Let's go right up the line.
So again, Andrea Young. I guess I just want to say I would love for you all to check out my website. I will be having a few meeting greets coming up on April 4th and April 6th where we can talk more personally. I was invited to a meeting greet this Saturday. That's actually for Duane. But one of the constituents told me that I can come. And yeah, just continue to follow. Thank you. And caucus is April 8 at 7:00 PM at North.
Yeah, come out to caucus. Amber Frederick, really, really nice to meet everybody here today. I hope to have a conversation with everybody. Reach out to me. I love to talk. That's, I think, probably one of the biggest assets about this job is just being able to engage in that conversation. You can find me on social media, AmberForward5 or amberfrederick.com. You can reach out to me on there. Caucus is April 8. That's my birthday. So you know, yes, yes, there he is, dang, yep. Yep, yep. So pop out to caucus, come show up. I'll bring treats. I'll bring cupcakes.
All right, Miles Wilson. I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight, taking time out of your schedules and taking time out of your evening to be here. You can learn more information about me personally at both mileswilson.org is my website. As I'm sure everybody here will mention, caucus is April 8, so we would love for everyone to be out and support. And also, I mean, you can catch my next event in May where I will do a fundraiser and a campaign party in May and that will be at the Royalston Square, which is a newer venue in the ward. So I hope to see you guys at that point with more information to come on that. So thank you.
Pearl Warren. The art of leadership is not about the ability to command anyone to do anything, but it's about inspiring individuals' hearts to live with purpose. I want to be that inspiration for my community. Find more information about me on my website at Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N, Forward, and the number 5 dot com. I look forward to hearing from you all soon. Caucus is April 8. Registration begins at 6:30 at North Community High School. Be there or be square.
E for Ward 5, efornorth@gmail.com is where you can find me. I am on Twitter, Instagram, Blue Sky, Facebook. You name the social media site, I'm on it. And the thing that I want to let people know, the constituents know, as the other candidates have said, that yes, Tuesday, April 8 at North High is the caucus night. You guys have probably gotten phone calls from me and my team or others' team. But please show up. Please show up. I'm quite for sure that we will stick to the time from 6 to 8:30 at North High. North High is right up the street here, so please show up. Also, as I stated in my email, I mean, my website is eforward5 and I look forward to making sure that I engage with each and every resident for those that I do know and those that I don't know. And thank you for coming out tonight. And thank you, Black Political Action, and thank you, Youth Civic Leaders.
Javon Northington. I want to thank Black Political Action for putting together this great event for us and also Youth Civic Leaders. And my website is javonforward5.org. And I have some upcoming events. What I intend on doing is a string of events addressing recidivism, recidivism if I'm saying the word right. But also second chances, a reentry, letting guys know that they do have a voice even if they face those challenges from the past, that your voice and your vote matters. So I'll be addressing that. And then also I'll be doing a string of events while in different locations throughout North Minneapolis, we'll be doing food distribution and essential giveaways. So I'll be posting updates on my website. Again, that's javonforward5.